Pretty early on.
Yeah.
No, no, because this way we don't have to...
Gentlemen, we're on air. Hold the meeting order, roll call please.
Mayor Sui.
Present.
Mr. Burnham is absent. Mr. Delio is absent. Mr. Deportaire?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mrs. Wade is absent, but she is expected. And Mr. Youngblood?
I'm here. Do we have a quorum?
Yes, we're fine.
Should we make some real quick votes before Janice gets here?
Notice that this meeting was provided to the Burnersville News, Courier-News, Star Ledger, filed with the municipal clerk, and posted on the municipal bulletin board on December 29, 2015. Please all rise for pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, seeing presentations, that we have none, I'll move to approval of minutes. April 25, Mr. Brown was absent, and May 9. Any council members have any changes or comments on the minutes?
I'll move to approve both April 25 and May 9.
All right, seeing none, I'll accept Councilman Youngblood's motion to move.
Second.
Second by Mr. Deportaire. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. All right, at this point in the meeting, the mayor and council welcome any comments from any member of the public to help facilitate an orderly meeting and permit the opportunity for anyone who wishes to be heard. Speakers shall limit their comments to five minutes. If reading from a prepared statement, please provide a copy, an email copy, to the clerk's office after making your comments, so it may be properly reflected in the minutes. Anyone from the public who should be heard during the open session? Chris, come on. How you doing, Chris?
Hi.
Just state your name, even though we all know you for the record.
Christine Zamara, 28, Anderson Hill. So, this week, I just want to mention that in front of the post office at 8:00 a.m. and also in front of the post office at 4:00 p.m., the VFW does the flag raising and lowering. So, it's all local veterans, and it's a quick ceremony where they raise a flag. It starts promptly at 8:00, so if you get there at 8:10, you will have missed it. It's open to all members of the community, obviously, to support them, and I'm just bringing it up to remind people and let you know that it's happening, because it's so quick, and sometimes people are there just to mail a letter, and they don't know what's going on. The other reason I bring it up is because today was the first day, and the gentleman who spoke mentioned that it's the 150th anniversary of Memorial Day. And while he was telling this to a lot of children and adults alike, a giant garbage truck pulled up and made so much noise, it was very hard to hear him. So, I realize that you can't close the street for that, for a long time, but like I said, the ceremony's only 10 minutes, so I'll just leave it at that to let you know that it's happening, and it's all very good information that we should be listening to from them. So, if the street could be closed, or at least traffic diverted for, you know, five or 10 minutes, that would be helpful, because they do do poetry and prayers, and, I mean, I shouldn't say prayers, but prayers, poems. And it's all for the vets, and they really love it. That's it.
And thank you. What I'll do is I'll contact our local contractors and ask them to reframe from that area for this week.
Right, so today it was Rubenel. I mean, I know who, they have to do their job, and they have no idea.
That's fine, and they don't have any idea what's going on.
Right, they wouldn't know.
What days is this happening?
It's every day this week.
Every day this week.
Just this one week.
What are the times again?
8:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m.
And then there'll be, I'm also doing flags on Mount Area Road at the cemetery here on Saturday at 1:00, 1:00 p.m.
Is it seven days or five days?
It's just the five. So, this is not borough-sponsored, it's just the VFW guys kind of doing it on their own, so...
Okay, we have a nice new monument also on for Memorial Day, which will be unveiling.
I saw that in my paper.
All right. Thanks, Chris. Anyone else wishing to be heard from the public?
Yeah, I do.
Council members, anyone else for open session? All right, seeing none, I'll close the open session. I'll move to ordinances. All right, I open a public hearing on 16-1719, amending the salary ordinance of 15-1708. Public hearings open, anyone have any comments on that? Anyone from the public? Council members, none?
None.
All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Now entertain a motion to pass on final reading, and as adopted, is published.
I'll move.
Moved by Councilman Schmidt.
Second.
Second by Councilman Brown. Roll call please.
Mr. Burnham?
Yes.
Mr. Deportaire?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Youngblood?
Yes.
Mrs. Wade?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, resolutions. We have Resolutions 16-103 to 16-109. Any council members want to pull on these resolutions for further discussion or comment?
Okay.
All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to move. Resolution 16-103 to 16-109.
Move.
Moved by Councilman Schmidt.
Second.
Second by Councilman Youngblood. Roll call please.
Mr. Youngblood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Deportaire?
Yes.
Mr. Burnham?
Yes.
All right, item number nine, reported municipal attorney. Anyone have any questions for the attorney in open session on his report?
Discussing an executive.
Okay, Mr. Deportaire has some comments for executive session. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, I'll move to item number 10, council committee reports, public safety.
We're having a meeting tomorrow night.
Okay. Chief, you have anything?
No, we're meeting tomorrow night.
Okay, that's fine. All right, 10B, finance and personnel.
Just hatched on some salary things and pretty much, you know, we're lining up some presentations on that side.
All right, Mr. Delio is absent over 10C, engineering, technology, and public works.
Yeah, before I go through my list of things, Ralph had asked that a storage shed, Ralph, what field are we talking about?
Roswell.
Roswell, right. It's a four-by-foot structure, permits are put in place, it's to store rakes, field liners, and so forth, and wanted to see if we can get that put on next...
They had one, it was just broken apart.
It's broken, yeah.
Yeah.
So, we're looking to have that put on the next agenda to get...
And where exactly are they trying to put it?
I have pictures, if you want to see.
They placed down by the pole, behind the south.
Right where the electrical, the electrical equipment?
And there's a bar which you can down there.
They went to the, those truck boxes for a while.
There's a Husky box there.
Yeah, but that's 25 years old. Somewhere down by where the light switch is.
It's too close to the stream bed.
No, it's all...
You want it to be by the stream bed, Ralph, or no?
No.
Yeah.
I had that deftly on, don't need permission, walk the property with me. He'd take the two sides. So, I'm there. So, we're gonna, we're trying, we're talking about next, next meeting's agenda? Next meeting, there will be a resolution asking for a $100 fee. That's what I'm hoping. Tell me from my perspective.
That's fine.
Where's the legal?
This is the original, or you want this back, Ralph, right? Good as standing. Public Works, we had, we had a meeting the other day, last Tuesday. Mullins Lane, we finally received approval from SHPO to discuss the bid date for the sidewalk improvements, so after the long-awaited amount of time, that's finally moving in a positive direction. Sycamore Hill Road, the curb work began. Anticipated completion is by early June. Mika Road, we're waiting the construction schedule from the contractor, and we'll be able to start as soon as that's, any anticipated time, John, when that's, thought that might come in?
I wish I had something, the contractor's been a little less than clocked with the schedule.
Okay.
He's on the clock, you know, the, his time, the contract is already started, so it's not just...
So, he's already on the clock now?
Yes.
Okay. Post Cornet Road, contract was awarded, test pits are done on Mine Mountain intersection. Saw cutting should begin sometime this week. Liberty Road, test pits for the drainage design are done. Highview Avenue, the application is sent off to SHPO, and also test pits, drainage design done. I'm gonna skip over the library for now. The basketball courts, I guess most people have seen from postings on the bubble that paving's done, hoops are now up, it'll be a few more weeks until everything cures where we can put the top coating on it. The blue and green scheme that some people have posted out there, which looks nice, everyone's looking forward to that. Are people still, are there people playing on it already? Yeah, okay. That's allowed, no problems. Okay. The spring cleanup at the dump over the weekend, I heard was a great success, I know I was up there to drop off a few things, and Mr. Deportaire and some other people as well. The 202 paving project, I noticed today in the intersection of 202 and Maple, there was some, looked like some kind of curb work being done, some excavation behind the curb. I don't know exactly what the anticipated completion date of that is, but it looks like they're on their way, I guess weather permitting. Okay, we have, we had a meeting the other day up at the Clermont steps, and John, if you haven't, just wanted to see if you can give us a little synopsis of what we discussed up there that day, and we can have a discussion, because I know some people are interested in discussing further on that.
The last council meeting, we were asked to go over there and see if there was a way to possibly present a project that could be done in a couple of phases. And we suggested, you know, the possibility of taking down the steps, putting them all together, doing a little bit of research, trying to get some grants, and I think it was our, the agreement of the committee, that there really isn't a good place to try to fight for it, for lack of a better word, with this project. It looks like either you're into this project, and you do it, and we restore it, or you take down the steps, and that'll be the end of it. There's a lot of work that has to go in, if you take the steps down, it's easier said than done. You've got that huge support for that landing area that has to come down, and now a hole that has to be filled with something, we're not sure what's back behind there. There's a lot of pointing out that needs to take place. We walked away from it, I can speak to the committee members feeling that we should do the project.
Wait, you walked away from thinking that you should do the project?
No, no, we walked away from the site, we came back, we talked about it, and the general feeling is that we should do the project, although there was some heated discussion about where, what the funding source should be for it.
When we met up there the other day, there was some discussion about, as Mike was just saying, there's wants and then there's needs, and coming up with a way to do it after letting it sit for so long, we're at, what's the number that we figure?
It's north of 100,000. As time goes on, it's just getting worse and worse, it's even changed since the three months that we were up there looking at it, when we had John Cortez up there to take a look at it.
But what I'm told is that it was done incorrectly and personally.
Come on up, just, yeah, state your name for the record, so we know who you are. Thank you. It's a public meeting, so somebody just even in minutes. Thank you.
I'm Heather McDonald. And I actually live right above those steps, and I have children that have tried to climb down them. They're absolutely dangerous at this point, so, but what I was told was that they were not done correctly in the first place. I don't know how old they are. Do you know what year they were installed?
No, they're quite old.
Okay.
Predate me, I think, so, yes.
That is old.
Yes. And, you know, Stone was brought in, you know, we had this discussion in previous meetings from out of state to rehab them in the past, and it's been done a couple of times. I've been living here for about 24 years now.
Oh, wow.
And it's been done a couple of times.
And I heard they took the lowest bid, and did that point, whatever...
That's a responsibility.
Some had to require it, that we have to do.
Okay, and so was it installed incorrectly, or is that false information? Does anyone have an answer to that?
Originally, I don't...
I think originally it was probably put in properly, and it lasted a long time.
But why are they, why are they in this state, though? I mean, when, at what point did they start?
Stairs crumble, like if you go to any New Jersey transit facilities that have a second-story landing, don't crumble through snow, salt, you know, weather deterioration, so, you know, this time we're actually looking at it to really, if we do this, we want to dig everything out, do it right, put the right foundation in, the footings.
Okay.
Yeah, the issue is really they haven't been maintained, so I get anything else, you know? Don't paint your house for 30 years, and it's gonna start to come apart, but, so...
So, are they just not priority, or why, why really let, I haven't lived here that long, so, I just, it was very curious to me, because I moved here from West Hartford, Connecticut, and a beautiful town, and they, they took, you know, aesthetics very seriously, besides the fact that the stairs are dangerous. I understand they put the orange tape in front of it, but, you know, the orange gate has been pulled down at times, I'm sure, you know, people have gone up and down them. So, I just don't understand how the town let it get to that point, you know? My children are older now, and I can make it to these meetings, but, you know, back then, I just, I always drove past, and I wondered where we should be proud of what the town looks like, and for us to have let that, I've lived here seven years now, and I just, I've always been astounded by that.
Well, I agree with you on West Hartford, because I was just up there a couple times on college visits with my daughter, so...
Oh, really?
Yeah, it's beautiful, yes.
Oh, that's one of the best.
Yes.
It's such a beautiful town, we should take that town and really look at how to model this town after it's...
I don't want their tax rate.
Yeah.
That's probably why.
No, their tax rate is lower than ours. I lived there, I lived right in the downtown, so there's some of the, there's been a three-bedroom house that I live in now, and the taxes were about 3,000 less per year for me. So, they were actually, they're well-known, you know, it's a cheaper area in Connecticut, it's, you know, middle of the state.
And as a, as a resident, would you be in favor of repairing or removing the stairs?
Definitely repairing, because I, I mean, my children, when we go down the, I mean, it would have to be another discussion, because when, we took a bike ride, I let them go down that hill for the first time, the sidewalks, I mean, I can show pictures, I want to do...
The sidewalk is horrendous.
I mean, I'm appalled, because like I said, I just came from the town that is beautiful, they take their trees seriously, I mean, I have a picture of our neighbor's tree that was, I mean, annihilated, and I just, that's why I'm here today, because I just, I'm seeing our town just fall apart, and, you know, I would like to be proud of it, but I have people coming to visit, and now this tree, my four neighbors, I mean, there's no way that they had to take what they took out, so I just want to start to look at those things, they're important to residents, and, you know, the sidewalks, besides being dangerous, my kids can't ride their bikes down them. We took them for the first time the other day at 9:00. We usually pack the car up and take them down to somewhere safe, because of how bad our sidewalks are.
What, a tree was taken down by whom?
It was, what was the name of the, no, it was a tree company, that, that's...
Power company.
No.
That's a power company.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's utilities, we have no control over utilities.
But why in a town, but in a historical town? So, is it that, I mean, in a historical town, they, they would take that seriously, they would look at steps, stairs that are however many years old, and say, we would like to preserve them, they're important to the history of the town. A tree that is over 100 years, I mean, they, and last weekend, our neighbor, an elderly woman, her oak tree fell and just missed her house because of all the trimming that had been done over the years, and they didn't put thought into it, so it just fell over.
It was all one-sided?
It was, it was lopsided. So, I'm just concerned about that.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
And, anyone else? From the public?
I know this is an agenda item, we're gonna get to it, I really didn't mean to open that up to...
That's okay.
...public right now.
Okay, but we can hear the public comments in the...
That's fine, okay, all right.
Yeah, from a long-term draw report. Anyone else on the steps? It's on the agenda, but we'll hear you now, so...
I'm Jennifer Gunn, I've lived here 24 years, and I also live on Somerset, and use the steps. I actually came to a board meeting 24 years ago, before it even closed on my house, because they were discussing it at that point, and people want to use the steps, and that's why they're taking the cones away, you know, tape, because they want to use the steps. And I agree, I think that if you go to other communities, stairs like that are maintained, and they add to the value of the town, and if you look at the weed whacking and the way it looks, it's not attractive. So, I echo Heather's comments that we really do need the visuals, but also the safety. People want to use the steps, people of all ages, young kids, my age group, we want to use the steps, the sidewalks are not safe, and even if the sidewalks are done, people come whipping around that corner, it's a very tight corner, so safety isn't so good from traffic, because there's not lines there. So, subsequent to my moving in, there were at least two times where we did petitions, and we had the neighborhood, not just the main neighborhood, but all the way up to Stevens, Stevens, Somerset, we had over 60 or 70 people sign petitions. And so, we've come to the town over the 24 years, trying to get the steps taken care of. So, as taxpayers, I would like to see money going to things that people really want and will really use, and that would also make the property is more safely.
I understand that that hillside had been landscaped with some shrubs and things at one point, were you here when that was done, or was that before?
There's some trees at the very top that were done.
I think, I thought the hillside had some shrubs or something, or something like that was there.
They may have planted something, but if they have, it hasn't been maintained, I just saw, I just saw the weed whacking yesterday or today, and that's the way it's maintained. I do believe at one point they had done some, you know, nicer landscaping, but, you know, those steps can be maintained, you see in other, in other communities, in other states, stone steps that have been around for a very long time.
Yes.
I mean, I know my home is over 100 years old, so the steps were probably not built that far afterwards.
And French Green and Burnersville.
They lasted a very long time, and again, if they were not maintained, that's, you know, the fault of the town, to not maintain them properly, and let them get to this state where people want to have them taken out.
I agree. But French Green and Burnersville might look at a planting project, the only concern they have is irrigation, if they plant anything up there, i.e. carpet roses, drift roses, or something to that effect, is irrigation.
Did they maybe plant some other part that's irrigated?
Mm-hmm, so that's what we have to look at.
I mean, if we could start with the stair repair, then we can...
The problem is, that's 100,000 plus now, I mean, every week goes by, it goes up by another 10, 20, 30,000, God only knows, and you start looking at all the needs in Burnersville, and I mean, we have put money into it, and it wasn't done properly. I'm not sure how much confidence I have that the next project would be done properly.
Well, I think it's important to choose the right contractor, choose someone who's, who's not, you know, going to leave the country afterward, who has some accountability, maybe there should be a...
We have restrictions on who we can use, we have to use the local, that is a requirement.
Well, then there should be a clause put into the contract, saying that they have, you know, accountability to guarantee their work for certain, because it broke, the other stairs that came into ill-repair very quickly.
And we'd have to monitor the project with our engineering, we'd have to make sure the engineering that we, our engineers provide, our professional engineers, is done correctly. So, we'd have to have a site foreman out there for the borough, just monitoring the engineering and the work that's being done.
Right, and I understand want and need, but there is a need for safety, and I think that if you have 24 years of history of people wanting these steps done, you know, there was a, that was a safe place to have the mothers be able to pull their cars there years ago, that's where the, at the bottom of the hill is where the bus stop was, and so they just took that away, and made the kids move, you know, go further away, so I believe it is a need, and certainly as a taxpayer, for the time I've been paying taxes, I would like to see some return on what I'm getting, you know, for paying taxes.
Well, John, for 125,000 to 150,000, how much road can we, can we do? About?
100,000.
The thing is, for the amount of residents that have this, and then let's say, let's call it what it is, that's a shortcut, okay? So, it's a convenience, and to sit and to weigh how much we can get done for a road where everyone drives on versus a few residents, it's a lot of money per resident, instead of it spread out throughout the community. So, I think that's a little concern, I know it's a concern of mine, whether the council comes together and decides to do something, and getting money from different sources, however they're available to us, is to be seen, but I understand everyone's concern who lives up there, believe me, if I lived up there, I may feel the same way, but it's just something that you have to realize, when we spend money, it's for the whole community.
I understand, but if you also look at our sidewalks and our...
Well, I think we have a plan, I think we have a plan to get that done, in fact, that's...
I understand, but again, I've been there 24 years, my road's never been paved, the sidewalks are falling apart, so it's dangerous to go to walk your dog at night, there's any number of given, you know, things that are very treacherous, so, you know, I just, I feel that our voices need to be heard, because we've kind of been asking for this for, I know at least for...
No, we thank you for coming forward, but we are taking an aggressive approach to our infrastructure development, roads, sidewalks, et cetera, you know, so that is occurring, that's why we went out for our long-term funding, and we have a number of road projects, as Chris stated already this evening, we had a number completed last year, and we're gonna keep moving forward with that.
Isn't Stevens and Woodland area, aren't they up for next year?
Somerset, next year.
Somerset.
Tom, when we do Somerset next year, is, I mean, the sidewalk there is...
Drainage, curb, side...
Yeah, it's all gonna be covered, yeah.
So, everything will, that sidewalk will be there.
We just can't do everything in one year.
Right, so the sidewalk is in the Somerset project?
It's a priority based on, based on need, as far as how, what level of degradation the road and sidewalk is, and like we're just saying, I thought for sure it was on for next year, and it turns out it is.
So, what's the cost to take the stairs down?
Well, that was an expression.
If you rip all the stairs out, what's the comparative cost to...
Take them down.
Well, you can take the stair down, but you can't take the wall.
Reinforce the whole wall, but you're on a roadway.
The wall.
Right.
I don't know that that's the case, is that the case, John? Was someone from the public saying that you can't just take the stairs down, that it needs to be reinforced to hold up the rest of the wall?
You quoted 30,000.
We had a quote to do it, right, to take it down?
We had a quote of about 30,000 to demo and to point up the wall. We don't know what's behind, again, in that one tall landing area that supports the top landing, we don't know what's behind that.
So, how is it going to look?
I would assume it's, you know, a formidable stone wall, but it'll probably be pushed, but we don't know until we get into it.
Anyone else from the public?
No, so, I want to understand what that's gonna look like, what are they up there against?
You mean, if the stairs would be come down?
Yeah.
It would look like the rest of the, it would look like the rest of the, look like the rest of the slope.
Chris Crisbaker, C-H-R-I-S-B-A-C-H-U.
You also live on Somerset?
Yes, and I've been there for 20 years, and we were told 20 years ago that the sidewalks were gonna be repaired, so we've been trying to fix our sidewalk for 20 years, because we were told the curbs and sidewalks would be repaired, so we have been living with it for 20 years.
Well, the money is allocated now, so it will be, I promise you that it will be done.
No, I just, I wanted to understand what the fix would be, because that wall is supporting the upper landing, once you do that wall, and you do the upper wall, there's not much left to save the rest of the stair, to finish out the stair. The bulk of the work is that wall and the upper wall.
You'll have to take the foundations out for the stairs, you'll have to take everything out and then redo it.
So, just the cost of putting back a chair, and putting something in to replace the steps, about 30,000? And putting something into replaces steps, about thirty thousand?
I'm trying to understand what the, what the, what it's going to look like when you put the wall back. I'm trying to find, let me see if I can find it. So, so, so this is the wall that has to get repaired, you're just going to close this off and leave that, that part of the wall there, and this is the landing.
Right. You close off and you take the landing and the steps down.
Well, you can't, that, that you really can't. The, the steps are in two sections, the main run could be removed. The problem is...
This is a set of stairs.
Right. That, that set of stairs, you would have to somehow wrap that wall. If you see the color in the stones?
Put the wall around it to close it off.
Yeah. If you notice the stones are two different colors, this long run was the second section. I think those stones come out of Pennsylvania, whereas those other ones were local. So it's two different ages of the wall, so we'd have to come up with some way to finish the parapet around.
Right. My point is, once you do that, the cost to do that and fill it in, you're going to be up around the same cost as doing this thing.
So is the thirty thousand, do we know if the thirty thousand includes the backfill or if it's totally demolished and where that's really putting the backfill and adding some stabilizer?
Sorry, I didn't catch the question.
But the question's being asked, if the demolition of the stairs were to happen, does that include filling in to make the slope even with the rest of the slope that it is now?
It's at pretty much the same grade, so yeah, the demolition of the stairs is actually a pretty easy process, need to say it that way, but the demo's not a problem especially because there isn't much in the middle. I mean, that is the problem, in between the parapet walls with the stairs is just a bunch of crumbling material as we found out when we were up there. That's why past repairs have not lasted any time at all, they were, they were Band-Aids.
But is, okay, so it's easy to demolish, but I'm asking is, is the cost of that thirty thousand including backfill that's needed for restoring it to, like, not just digging it out, but putting it back in, whatever needs to hold together, earth that needs to be replaced and wrapped?
Yes, yes, there isn't a whole lot in the way of that though.
Because it's pretty steep, it's pretty high up, so you'd think it'd be quite a bit of earth that needs to backfill.
You just follow the existing slope.
So John, you said in the past there were Band-Aids that the borough applied and this would be total reconstruction, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what's driving the cost. And we're looking to pour concrete in the middle between the stairs so we have something formidable to set, loose stone or limestone tread.
So it's anticipated this will last much longer if we move forward, total reconstruction?
Certainly.
Okay.
Much like we talked about with the roads, whereas a mill and pave only, this is a whole reconstruction of the road, more or less.
Bill?
I was just going to say, is there anything else you want to wrap up on Public Works before we roll into...
Well, since we started this, it's an agenda item, we'll just include it right now. Anyone else on the steps? Yeah? This way we don't have to stop and start again. Yes, sir, how are you?
Good, good.
Jonathan, this is my wife, Michelle. We also live in the neighborhood.
We live on six Somerset, so we live...
What's your last name?
Goodeleman, G-O-O-D-E-L-M-A-N.
Okay.
We moved from Manhattan a year ago.
All right.
A big draw for the both of us was being close to the town, walking distance to the train as we commute to the city five days a week. We love the stairs, obviously we haven't been able to use them, they're, we would love for them to be repaired. And it sounds like this is in limbo and it may not happen, so if it does not, the whole, you know, from the walk down the hill to the train station is, I would say, you know, there's garbage everywhere, there's glass bottles everywhere, as Jen was saying, you know, that whole lawn area is just unkept. We were walking about two weeks ago and I got a big shard of glass in my shoe. It's just unacceptable, even coming around, which I understand sidewalks will be repaired, coming down that hill, which is fine, you know, we can do it, it's, we love the stairs, it was there when we moved there, we would like it to be repaired. If it can't, coming around that bend, we find it to be quite dangerous, just cars flying around.
Yeah, I think, just to inject for a second, it's not just a shortcut to get down there, I don't know who was over there last week from the council, but...
The Public Works Committee was there, we met on the stairs last week.
So it's, it's been mentioned a few times that on the other side of the street is where the sidewalk is, and as you come down that hill, it's really a blind corner for anyone coming down Clermont. People are whipping down that hill either to turn into the neighborhood or continue on going down Clermont. So if you go, let's say that the sidewalk gets fixed and you walk down the sidewalk, you still have to kind of cross the street and again, it's a blind corner, so it's really not the safest of areas to cross over.
And what is it, it's like twenty-five, thirty-five miles an hour?
Cross over the street, you know, people are flying down that...
Nobody's going, but, but they're, they're going quite fast and it's dangerous, it makes me nervous. Have a family, burn his own one day and it's really, we're not happy, I mean...
And even from, you know, aesthetic standpoint, that's kind of a main central focus point in town, right?
Where everybody's going through momentum and whatever.
Where's the garbage and the glass and things you were talking about?
So right when you're going past that parking lot on the left, sorry, I don't know.
You're talking about on Clermont Road?
On that hill where the stairs are, you know, there seems to be a lot of debris, it's really not kept up very well.
On the sidewalk itself?
On the sidewalk and up in the grass.
Up in the grass, you can see, if you just walk down, you'll see some alcohol bottles, right, you know, just garbage.
Okay.
Yes, correct. And I was walking and, like, great. So, you know, even just the train station in general, it's not, but it's also, you know, not so well.
No, we appreciate your comments and we're not in limbo or moving forward in a direction or another.
Yes, I hope so, I hope so.
Yes, and like we said, we have plans for, you know, road construction next year there and a sidewalk.
Right.
And the question now becomes a public meeting, that's why we're here, to discuss the steps.
Right.
But thank you.
Yes, and even for the roads and sidewalks, which hopefully will be done in 2017.
Yes.
When we moved, we were going to redo them right away because it's a huge liability for us, for anyone who walks down, you know, on, that's considered our property and if someone falls and hurts themselves, liability, so.
Yes.
We just hope that's done.
That's definitely being done, that's already...
And like I commented, we've taken an aggressive approach to infrastructure development here and redevelopment, so that's what we're looking at. And we're just here to discuss the steps, we appreciate your input and your comments.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Should we be adding a pedestrian crosswalk from the bottom of Somerset across the street to Clermont?
I mean, I would, even just like a slow speed blinking light, it is, so I would just, I mean, if everyone can go down Somerset and stop there, it's, it's really dangerous and it makes me very nervous, even when I'm, you know...
Some of that foliage too.
You can't see anyone.
Yeah, but it's not really trimmed back at all, it's...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Hey, John, is there anything that we could do about that shrubbery kind of, if you're coming down Somerset, Clermont to the left, so people can sort of see to the left there?
I already talked to my buildings and grounds people about that.
Oh, did you?
Yes.
Okay.
We have issues with poison ivy along with the sidewalk, the hedges need to be trimmed back, there's not weed growing there, so.
Right.
There's, there's work that needs to be done there, just more.
I mean, would that help alleviate some of the concern a little bit, I would hope, just at least, yeah. Sure.
Yeah. For now, as a first step, as a first step to start the process moving forward.
I took the children bicycling for the first time down that hill and I was in a respect, they even asked me to ride their bikes to school, they're nine and a half. And my husband and I were walking behind them, I said, they can't, they're almost in the street because of these bushes, I can't believe, and it's ever here. And again, I'm just, I've never come to these to make my point, but that's just another point we're looking out for that. Do we have to constantly complain to somebody or is it...
Well, if you see something that needs to be addressed, and we appreciate you being here tonight and hearing all this, but if you need, see something, just call in to the Borough Hall and it'll be, and the situation will be taken care of and addressed. Yes, ma'am?
I just wanted to go on record and say...
Need to come up and say your name and address.
Yeah, thank you.
Record involves being on, the cameras are here.
I knew you wanted to say something.
I just click save and I'm not going to, it's been said, my neighbors have echoed every, all kinds of things.
And just say your name for the clerk and register.
Thank you, I see you tend Somerset Avenue, B-O-S-I-E.
Thank you.
You're saying it's going to cost upwards of one, over a hundred thousand dollars to fix those stairs, but as you can see from my neighbors who have lived here longer than I have, twenty years, twenty-four years, and have been asking for this to be fixed, and there have been patches that have been done to these stairs, which are laughable really, when you see the, the work that was done. And they're still not fixed. And now it's, oh, it's over a hundred thousand dollars to fix them, that's the town's responsibility. They haven't fixed them properly for over twenty years. It's not the stairs' fault, it's not the neighborhood's fault, it's not the people that uses them, it is the town's fault. It is their neglect, they haven't maintained them, they haven't fixed them properly, they have taken the cheap way out and they haven't fixed them properly. So for the neighborhood to then suffer a loss for the use of the stairs, the aesthetics of the stairs, the beauty that it brings to our neighborhood, which is fair, we're proud of that neighborhood, we're proud of that street, for that to be ripped down and filled with a pile of mud, I don't think it's fair for people that have lived there for over twenty-something years and the town to just say, eh, we don't have the money, we want to go pave some more streets in the town. I understand, everybody in this town has needs, I get it, but the town has dropped the ball on this and I think they owe it to that community, which is a very proud Burnsville community, to fix that the proper way, that way.
Thank you.
One point came up, like, is that by fixing the stairs, you will increase foot traffic, because if you, if you're not going to be able to use the stairs, you're more likely to just jump in the car, try to find a parking spot, let's use the parking spots for people who have to drive, who don't live within walking distance. One of the reasons so many of us moved there is because we want to be able to walk into town, we want to be able to walk safely. If I go to a movie and I'm coming home late at night, I don't want to be, you know, worried about I'm going to fall on the sidewalk, I'm going to fall on the steps, I want to be able to walk safely. So I think it's a really, really good point to consider that you are going to increase foot traffic and people with children are going to let their children like go down and get on ice cream, where they might not want them doing it if they have to go winding around on the sidewalk and deal with the, you know, hazardous corner. So just consider also that, that investment might very well help foot traffic.
Thank you.
Do you guys never come down Essex, I can't remember with Little Road?
Little sidewalk.
We do.
And it's actually, they're very, very...
These are the...
Bad condition.
Bad condition.
All right, anyone else on the Clermont steps? All right, we'll continue with the Public Works Report.
Public Works Report's done.
All right, very good. Sandy, any other committee, commission reports, Bill, anything from H-PAC or Shade Tree?
Nothing from H-PAC, we'll have some discussions later.
I can hear some proposed sessions.
Right.
All right.
But, and Shade Tree, no.
Environmental, Green Team.
The Green Team, we want to pursue, starting to work with the deer management group, sorry, excuse me, and they just want, you know, the chief has asked Joe Nappi and the group from Blue Ridge to remove the deer blinds that were found, that had been illegally there for a couple of years. But we really can't go back and ask them to do that unless we, as a borough council, are prepared to move forward with deer management and the board. And it's not going to be open end deer management, you know, it would be like one day every couple of weeks that would be posted on the website. I mean, one of the things that just kept, you know, coming up in some of the earlier discussions last spring is this sort of feeling that there was going to be random hunts, it's not, would not be hunts, it would, random hunts, it would be, you know, posted for five in the morning till ten on the third Thursday of the month or something like that, in heat or track or whatever we're talking, the three parks basically that we were talking about. But the Green Team really needs the okay to, I mean, we passed the resolution back in the spring, but to approach Blue Ridge or another organization. We've spent a lot of time with Blue Ridge, I think that that would be, if we go this route, it would be appropriate to use Blue Ridge.
Okay, so we need some type of formal proposal to adopt a specific club, am I correct, Jeff?
Correct.
All right, so we will come back in two weeks.
We've got three acres approval and two million dollars.
All right.
Good.
So who is going to ask for that?
I would get to, I guess I would take responsibility for that with the Green Team.
All right, anything else?
Yes, Peter?
We, we've all got some information on the water tables and the wells and all that, so do we want to put that on the agenda for some future date and have Environmental come back to help explain it to us or?
Sure, check with the commission, see whenever available.
With the environmental?
Yeah, yeah. And I'll just contact myself or Chris as the council president and Sandy and we'll get it on the agenda.
Were there differences of opinion between Environmental and any other governing committee there or?
I think only Environmental was charged with that from the planning board a number of years ago when there was an issue with the house that only had a one gallon per minute well. And that was, so it took a number of years for it to actually get to this stage for a number of reasons, from what I found. So I, I don't know, whatever, any else?
Okay. No, just when we had the presentation, there seemed to be a little difference in terms of how many houses in a subdivision would be subject to the requirement. I would just say, as long as that could kind of be addressed and the committees on...
That's only a, that's only a draft. The planning board asked for a minor subdivision, which I believe is five, my child, or something. And they were asking for two, which I think is, some towns have to, is a minor subdivision. So it's, it's open.
Okay. Just, you know, I don't want to start down a road and then a different committee says, hey, we were looking for something different and, you know, it delays the process.
Has this been a problem in our town? I mean, has this been a reported problem in our town?
Just the one well.
Right, well, okay.
That's what, to do a study to check further on it and, yeah, there are, I mean, again, nothing's documented from what I understand.
That's what I hear, I mean, it's like saying we have a car problem and there's only one guy that broke down in a year. I mean, it's...
No, the reports of numbers of wells going in single properties because of people's, you know...
I'd like to see, those are the reports I'd love to see, because that...
I think they sent us some new information.
I asked the question...
Just had to do it, I haven't even read it yet.
When we, well, when we had the original presentation, that's the question I asked and there was no information to give. At least I received no emails.
I don't know, we just got something today.
I got two emails with additional information this week, I don't know if you got the most, but they came from in Birmingham.
Today you sent them?
I sent one today.
Okay, today I didn't, I didn't check my email today.
And I went back to follow up early this morning and asked her if this is, in her opinion, the information you asked for.
Right.
And she said, yes, so.
I think we're accurate, I understand the concern.
Listen, if it came today, then I didn't see it, so, okay.
But I also don't think we have that data anywhere because people don't have to...
Which is, which is simply why I'm saying, is this a problem that really is, needs addressing right now?
Just take a look at the information that we have.
They're supposed to file, I mean, the builders are supposed to file, they put it for the welling, so, I guess this will probably be a way to find out.
Sure.
One well.
Okay.
But if they try to do more than one well and they only, so if they did three or four and they only had one that was productive, I don't, no, that's reported.
Okay.
Anyone else? I've seen closed council committee reports and more items of business. Our first item is Clermont steps. I think we heard everyone on that, right? So...
Sorry to jump ahead on that one, ma'am.
Anyone else have anything else to say? You can do it all over again if you want to come back up. Any council members have any comments on the Clermont steps at this point or you want to further research this?
Is there any way to try to get some funds from open space to do it? I mean, we have some money in there to fix the top.
Well, I checked.
And since it's for walking paths and...
And Rizzo Park.
Because all the money right now is, is bound up on roads right now to get that
Because all the money right now is bound up on roads right now to get that done and in order to get it going so we can do the road up on Somerset next year, we have to get on this pretty much right away.
Yeah, we talked about that finance, but we have to find out if or if not Cooser is on our open space plan. It seems to be in a mission in one final step, but we have to
I believe it's on it, Jack, right?
Isn't it listed as a park, John?
It's listed as a, as a borough park.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's on Green Acres. Yeah, Cooser Park's on Green Acres.
Rossy. Ross did not
Not the one you think.
Yeah, different.
But not, not the neighbor.
Yeah, let's make that clear.
So if that, if that's the case, that's a simple solution that we could start working towards.
And then we could use development funds towards that, Jack, or?
Maintenance funds.
Maintenance.
Maintenance, okay.
They'll improve it.
All right, very good.
So do irrigation and other things to, I mean, visual is a passive, you know, recreational use, I guess is an interpretation.
Especially when you walk up and down a couple of times, you can look at it.
And certainly we could have exercise.
Yes, that could be an exercise.
So should we, so should we, do we have to move something at this point in time to use open space funds? What do we have to do at this point in time?
You have to make sure that there's funds available for the non-acquisition part of the will by the end of the year, is that right?
Can we do that tonight or you need to draw that up?
I think we should do it at the next meeting.
Yeah, we'll draw a resolution up to use open space funds to apply towards the Clermont Steps. And the council will vote on that.
I've looked at that area a number of times and it is
We've approved, we've already approved two different sums of money towards the project. It's just that the funds aren't sufficient. So we should be able to use, you know, if we use what we've already budgeted, pick up the balance from the maintenance of open space. I think we have a pretty good idea on what we're looking to do in terms of to make the steps more solid, putting, you know, poured concrete on the stairs with a blue stone top. So we have something that's not, right now, they're all little stones and they're just going to constantly fall apart.
And the risers, you mean?
On the stairs themselves.
Not patching anything.
They should be able to tell us. Correct, but in a way that is more, more maintenance.
And it's, you know, the other thing, you know, you have to remember, we now will have to look at where the banister, they have to be railings. The ones that are there right now, the iron are probably not sufficient. So do you put one down the middle, two on the sides?
Yeah, everything has to be ADA compliant.
Right, they're not to code right now.
So not to code, or the existing steps
The steps won't be
Aren't to code at all.
Steps won't be ADA.
Steps won't be ADA.
Yeah, no, but The handrail still has to be though.
I don't think it's a good place to go sledding in the winter time.
Just to be clear, we can only use open space trust funds for acquisition and development, but I think these qualify as development.
Okay.
Because if it doesn't place, what are you saying?
Right.
Right. So if we're going to have that resolution for June the 6th, I think we can move on that.
13th.
13th?
Yeah, June 13th, right, Jack? Our next meeting, Sandy? Correct, yeah, June 13th.
You're correct.
Okay. All right, ma'am, did you have anything else to say?
No, I was just going to say one of them, I lived here for 20 years and I remember when I first lived out in North here for one of the, I think it was one of the parades that came down and people would sit on the hill and that was not a bunch of weeds, it was actually a pestilence with, it was grass and you could actually sit there and people would sit there and watch.
And as we do this project with the steps, we'll look at creating beautification also, you know, besides just stone steps, we'll look at further plantings.
Since you're all here and you all live there and it is your backyard, if it wasn't grass, because grass on a steep hillside is, is actually very dangerous and also very difficult to maintain. Right, John? Would it be fair enough to have like shrubbery and some other maybe low trees that are, you know, so that it looks
Flowering plants, tall worts, etc.
I want flowers and I want it to, they spread and
I sense a community garden.
Well, this is your, Peter and I were both at the deer control meeting at the library. My sister's Christine.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right, I remember.
She's environmentalist and is a common probably and is giving some guidance. She actually works for Watershed.
Okay.
She's the director of science there. She could probably give some input on what shrubbery is placed.
I know your sister.
Because if it's these barn areas or anything of that nature, very, very bad for the environment. So if we, if we as a community could ask some sort of input on making sure that native plants are planted, I think removing the grass would be a smart idea.
Very good.
And in terms of like the, you know, the orbit, you know, the glass and everything.
We'll get public works up there this week. And John's on his head.
I mean, the downside to that is that
We used to walk to the bus stop every
Yeah, but if it's glass and stuff, it needs to be immediately addressed, you know.
If you have things you can't see because of the shrubbery or plants, you know, unfortunately, you know, some of that will accumulate over time, but at least around the edges where you can see it maybe a few minutes.
Could the shrub help with drainage as well?
Yes.
Some of that erosion, I'm assuming that would help.
Yes. Yes, sorry.
All right, so anything further on the Clermont Steps?
Let's control animals.
I want to thank everybody for coming out and sharing your opinions and
Yes, thank you.
I think we have paid, well, I'll come here this evening and I'll be moving forward. So thank you, thank you. All right, 11B, animal control procedures.
This has come up because we don't have any written procedures and a week or so ago we had an incident with a dog bite. Turned out the dog got loose, was not licensed and did not have current rabies. And it was, it just brought to light the suggestion that maybe we should have some written procedures so that our animal control contractor can just go ahead because they've just been checking with us on a case by case basis for everything that happens. So I asked them for some samples that are used in other communities that they work for and this is pretty much what we're looking for. The only news thing that we, I mean, this is pretty much what is here, what winds up happening anyway, because especially with dog bites, there's always a summons issue because that's a very major problem. And the only new thing is summonses that could be issued for failure to license. But our animal control people said that if we don't take that step, those people know that if they don't license their animal, you know, they will not have a consequence. And that's how you wind up with animal.
Well, it also seems to me that a $10 fine for not licensing is
Not enough.
Not very minimal.
It's minimal. At most municipalities
It's actually a larger and then it was reduced a few years back by the council, I remember when
Is that safer than that? They've got caps on it. It's a kind of safe
Yeah, yeah, so most municipalities
A lot of the lakes, I don't think, out here, they use
I think so.
They escalate for a while there. I mean, it's changed. So if you agree with us, we'll put it in the minutes and that will be our record that everyone's in agreement with us. If there's anything you don't agree with, we'll, we can change this any way you like.
And this is the recommendation from our animal control personnel?
Yes.
Yes, and it's pretty much what is done in most of the towns that they work for. I mean, you know, we only check with all the towns, the policies that they work with.
Give them what they, give them what they're looking for.
I think that's correct. I agree with 100%.
Well, this last incident was really a concern because the person who was it went to the doctor and the doctor was wondering about inoculations and they were having trouble tracking down the information. So it just goes to show how serious it can be.
All right, so we want favor adopting?
Yep.
Looks in our package, yes? Yes, all right. Very good. All right, community development block grant program.
Wait, are we going to also send out, there were two letters. One was like you registered your dog last year, but we haven't heard from you this year. Are we authorizing both?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, the whole program, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, just what they recommended. All right, 11C, community development block grant. Anybody have any comments on that? Do we participate?
I was just curious, why does Far Hills not participate? Or, I mean
Can't answer for Far Hills, you have to examine.
No, I was just curious, I mean, it doesn't cost us anything.
No.
Do we lose, I mean, Somerset or Franklin, I guess it was Franklin.
We usually don't get much out of the program, but you have to be in it just in case you ever need something. So it's always good to be in it. It's a, you know, funded program through the county, not through, not funded through the county, but we apply to the county.
It's one of the largest communities in
I was wondering whether they got more money by going direct.
They may have some individual private program or something.
And usually it's involved in, of course, community development, like sidewalks and infrastructure. So if Far Hills really doesn't have a need, they might see it as, you know, whatever. I can't speak for Far Hills.
Far Hills has to be alone in a lot of things.
But we've, we've, you know, we participate in the past and I recommend we continue our relationship with the program.
So we just need to return this resolution. They don't tell us when it has to be back, but if you approve it, we can just put a number on it and then I can prepare it and sign it later.
Okay, so we have, we have a resolution in our package.
I'll second it.
All right, moved by Mr. Bear Brown to approve, second by Mrs. Youngblood. Do you need a roll call on this, Sandy?
Who moved it?
Mr. Bear Brown, second by Mrs. Youngblood.
It has to be back by the later than July 1st.
Need a roll call, I guess.
Yeah, I would.
All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Burnham?
Yes.
Mr. Gilead is absent. Mr. Deaper Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wade?
Yes.
Mrs. Youngblood?
Yes.
All right, 11D correspondence, seeing, does anyone have any? Anybody received or any other comments?
I don't know, I guess I have something for contractors.
Okay.
Other thing was, no.
Okay. All right, open the second open session in the meeting. Anyone put a public question to be heard on the items? Miss, come on up, thank you.
I'm Alice Struble. I live down on Bonnar Street.
Yes.
And I currently am involved with the municipal alliance, or at least I've been attending meetings and I understand my name was presented by a Ms. Nancy, I can't pronounce
Palazolo?
Right.
Okay.
So the previous meeting I attended, there was an issue where I was not approved to be a member of the alliance. So I just wanted to put my face with the name and see if there was any additional information you needed from me or from Nancy in regards to that appointment.
No, basically the chairperson of the alliance was contacted the governing body, the clerk through the clerk's office.
Yeah, that's new to me.
And we haven't received anything.
I haven't heard from anyone, so unless someone tells us
Yeah.
I'm sorry, we, I haven't heard from anyone.
Yeah, we haven't received anything.
Okay. So I'll follow up with Nancy because I was told that whatever information she gave wasn't ever approved.
Yeah, no, this is the first hearing of this, so
That's from who she gave it to.
Okay.
Yes, yes, so, but no, we appreciate your participation also, thank you. And nice to meet you this evening, thank you.
Mayor, you asked to add a recreation refund?
Yes, we had a request for a recreation refund this evening. Sandy, what was the development with this? Was there anything else that happened in the meantime or?
Well, apparently the individual is considering another program, but as of the end of the day today, they have not actually committed to anything.
Okay.
So Cheryl, Francie recommended you just look at the request the way we have it.
Okay.
And I outlined the amount that would be refunded, but what, what she was rejecting to was withholding the 15%.
Yes.
It was explained to her that it's a new policy, it applies to everybody.
Mm-hmm.
The policy's all over, the information that goes out, it's posted on the door. But there was no other, she wanted to talk to the mayor, so that's why
Okay, and I received this request and writing.
Did we have any, what, what's Cheryl's position on the?
Well, the recreation committee requested the refund policy. A lot of time and effort is spent on these enrollments, so
Right, and I think what she said was that, you know, they, if they, if they lose a couple of registrants, they may have to cancel a program.
Oh, she didn't, yeah.
Yes.
She didn't tell me, she didn't raise that issue in regards of this request for a refund.
And I think there's a second request that maybe came in.
There's another one pending.
I haven't seen yet.
We don't know how far, where that one's going. So I guess the question for you at this point is, do you stand by your policy that you just couldn't like march?
Yeah, I'd say support the recreation.
Absolutely.
They've asked for it for a reason, so
There's also mention of a $45 present credit card.
Which is already been paid, the borough pays for that, that's what it costs, someone pays by credit card.
We pay it or the, or it's paid up.
It comes out of the fees.
It's tracked back to us, so we're charging that already.
No, it gets charged. If you pay it by a credit card
You pay on top of the amount.
Like, if you pay your taxes
They pass it on to you.
Your, right, but that's, so that's a voluntary cost. I mean, they could
Right, they can write a check, sure, absolutely.
But that's already been paid, so if we were to refund anything, we would reduce, you know, the amount refunded by that number.
I say you have to support
One question that I had, which wasn't really answered in the literature that we got from Cheryl, you know, this child, I don't know whether he was going, you know, from basketball or another camp to the pool, whether it was coming from Bedwell or from the middle school. How many of these kids are, you know, Cheryl said it didn't seem practical to send, and there were too many different kids to send an escort.
Right, a few years ago they eliminated all that because there are just too many possibilities and they were just given the staff to transport people and reclaim programs.
How far did it go?
In this case, I'm not sure.
The problem is, all of the camps, I think, used to be at Bedwell, but I think some of them now have been moved to the middle school.
But it's all in that complex.
It's mentioned in the letter here, you know, crossing a busy parking lot, etc.
Right, but the question is, are they coming from the middle school or from Bedwell? So then they're just walking across from the parking lot or the playground.
Yeah, I think the Y is participating in some programs also.
A lot of that is, I think, at the high school, I'm not sure.
I think we'd have to get
There's more questions.
Yeah.
Either way, I mean, I think we're all parents and we all took care of our kids of plenty of different programs and, you know, usually you know that kind of stuff.
Or you find someone else
Because you're used to doing it, or you find someone else you have to help. You trade off, you know, carpooling or whatever. Is it, I mean, is it some kind of personal disaster or of course, you know, but I think that's a standing on the policy.
Okay. Everybody in favor?
Yeah.
Any other comments? All right.
I do have one question though. I know we don't have a crossing guard in the summer. If we needed to maintain one, is that something that
You just have to, you just have to vote for your summer.
Yeah, I mean, right.
Yeah, it's permissible.
It is permissible. And, and do they, because they work for us and not for the Board of Education, they're entitled to unemployment? Is that still true?
They are entitled to apply for unemployment in the summertime, in the summer months.
But if they stay at unemployment, is there any, any minimum hours or something we have to face?
We have to look into that.
Yeah, it's up to, they could look into it because I mean, they probably would, but it might be worth a
I think the hours, exactly why people, you know, I think their hours are determined weekly, not annually. As long as you're working less than so many hours in a week, they're considered part-time employee.
As a part-timer?
Yes. It's, well, it's there.
We use 28.
We use 28 as a cutoff, just to have a cover.
For, for a part-time, no, not for part-time.
For part-time.
Yes.
All the They're regular employees, but they're part time employees.
Yeah, they're full time, um, part time. Per, I'm sorry.
Permanent, part timer, ladies, yeah.
This week he has a school, is that what you're saying?
I don't know.
Well, again, it depends a little bit whether the kids are coming from Bedwell or from the middle school. Cause the middle school actually has a.
And we'd have to coordinate that.
Sidewalk.
I mean, if you orchestrate some kind of safe passage route.
That's a good idea, Peter, thank you.
I mean, they're all the same, complex.
Yes.
I mean, I know there's logistics problems.
Yeah, so traffic control, want to save passage is, is a good point, yes. Thank you.
Of course, we, we only be posted on, on our public streets, so we cannot post them on school board property.
Thank you. Thank you. I knew there had to be something.
Okay. Anyone else for the open session before I close? Yes, ma'am? Come on back.
Question, as on behalf of all the neighbors of Somerset. When we were at the last meeting, there was some, there was a mention in the.
Won't you come on up here, please?
His plans for his storage building.
Yes.
Right in our backyard.
Yes.
And we wanted to understand what the process is. I know there's a planning board meeting on Thursday.
Okay, it's not in front of the planning board. The planning board already viewed the matter, so it's in front of the board of adjustment.
I understood as of today, no application has been filed.
No application in file, okay. With the board of adjustment.
Once an application is filed, then it will be discussed at the.
Public meetings.
At the, not here, board of adjustment.
Board of adjustment, public meeting. But if they never, you don't.
I was gonna say, what do we, what do we do to not even let it get here?
As basically, well, it's here already.
Okay.
But it's in the board of adjustment's hands right now.
But, but it hasn't been filed.
But it hasn't been filed, so it's been.
It's moved.
It's, so it's moved right now.
Until they file it, nothing has happened.
What you're gonna have to do is pay attention to the agenda of the board of adjustment and that's posted on our website, correct, Sandy?
Yes.
Yes, so just keep going to the website and there'll be notifications. There should be notifications that go out to all the neighbors. But just in case.
There's no application.
It does not occur, so there's no application filed at this point with the board of adjustment. But that's what you, then you would go to that meeting, to the board of adjustment meeting and publicly express your concerns about the project.
It's not something we're voting.
If he ever files.
If it ever gets filed, yeah. But it came to the governing body.
And the answer was clear as much.
Process the way it's supposed to.
Yes.
Right.
Okay.
I'm very happy this came up because last meeting, when we had a crowd of people here talking about the TD bank in town, everybody was under the impression to come to council to talk about this, but it was the planning board and they were late for the meeting. It had already been done. And it's portrayed in our local media that this was something that the council had to do with. So, I'm glad that this is coming up tonight.
You have to watch for that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You will be notified if it's filed.
It's always good, as you're active in the community and you're concerned, to pay attention to what's going on with the planning board, the board of adjustment and other boards besides just the municipal council. Cause many times they receive applications and we find out later. It, it might be a subdivision in your neighborhood, which we wouldn't know about until later, and it might directly affect you. Might be a neighbor next door to you that wants to do a subdivision or something, yes.
Well, when I first moved here, I, you know, I thought it was a very attractive term. I, I thought that, you know, there was consideration to some of those things. A lot of the banks were in historical buildings, but after the change of building, I, I paid attention.
Yeah, with, with the business district zoning, you have a state highway coming through the center of Burnersville, so that's, that's important to pay attention to.
Yeah, you have to have a voice about what our town.
And also we'll be basically reconfiguring our master plan going into two thousand and seventeen. So, if you have any issues or concerns, please send them to us so we can.
And that'll be going to the planning board. We'll be doing that and there will be public sessions on that, so.
That's the master.
Yeah, and the master plan involves a lot of zoning throughout town and the way the town's gonna look like coming in the future. So, that's what we discussed tonight, so.
Well, TD, do they plan to plant some trees out there? I mean, they took out.
There will, there, there, yeah, there's a plan at the planning board. There is a planting requirement. There's probably also a donation I'll have to make to our tree trust fund.
They actually paid a couple hundred thousand dollars to get access for emergency vehicles to the back of the high school, which they didn't have to since it's their own property.
Well, I'm sure that was a political issue because it doesn't take that long to get to the back of the high school.
No, it was just, it was just something that was asked by the chief of police for emergency and they, they succumbed to it.
I think that's nice, but I also, you know, I think that the way that they poured the trees and it made it look horrible.
Yes.
I'm nervous. I'm, I'm really, you know, hurt and scared and used to it, but it's not that hard to get to the back of the high school. I don't understand if we were having issues in the town for them, again, they're quite enough, but I don't, I never heard of that. Is that a problem getting to the back of the high school?
It's secondary access.
Yeah.
Just for clarification, the boards actually have powers that we don't technically have. Is that what you act, the, the, the board and the, and the board of investment?
Autonomous.
We can't interfere. Now, they get appointed through us, I guess, eventually, but.
I'm glad this came.
And the idea of interference is sort of like a separation of, you know, different.
You follow the state laws, MUL.
Bodies so that, you know, it's not all politically.
Value.
Yes, so as we become involved, as we are working on the master plan, and as we sit here tonight with Jack as our attorney, the boards have their own attorneys. So, it's totally autonomous.
Thank you for bringing that up tonight. That was important.
Anyone else? Seen none, I'll close the open session. We'll move into a closed session now where we're gonna discuss contract negotiations, energy solve and avid exchange.
I have two things, one pending litigation on Rawl and the second contract that you were anticipating to be settled, so.
You anticipated coming out of closed session?
All right, in addition to what Mr. Pigeon just put on the record and also contract negotiations, Somerset County turf field grant. I move, moved by Mr. Schmidt, second by Mr. Youngblood. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed.
Yes.
We'll move into closed session. Thank you. Thank you, thank you for coming tonight. Thank you.
I went from, I went from one point four one and when we did.